We're going to call a town council meeting to order. Welcome all the visitors and friends and other council members. I'm going to ask Mr. Duck if he will lead us in prayer and pledge allegiance, please, sir.
Be delighted. And good evening, everyone. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come before your presence tonight. We pray and thank you for the day that you provided. Thank you for your love and your grace, your mercy. We just pray that you will orchestrate and tonight lead this council and the business affairs that they will be dealing with for this town. We just pray for the families. We pray for this community. And we thank you for our nation. We thank you, Lord, for those who are in leadership above us, that we pray for them and respect them. We pray what's done here tonight will be done in order, in good taste, into your glory and to the good of the people, in Jesus' name. Amen. Let's stand and pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you, Reverend Duck. I'll look before for approval for the agenda, current agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Dupree. Appreciate the agenda as presented.
Got a motion on the floor. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Schedule public appearances. Tonight, we have two. Got Bonnie Cunningham. If you don't mind, you take the podium in three minutes to address the council. Thank you. Welcome.
So what am I supposed to do? This is my neighbor. He has land up the street. His wife is in serious condition. So he never intended to sell those three lots that he's got, but he's got to sell them. She's in real bad need. All right. They built three houses up on Oakley and flooded us there big time. And now they're talking about cutting those woods down and building houses now. We need drainage before you build anything else. We're going to drown.
Ms. Cunningham, what's your address?
203 Sunrise Street.
203 what?
Sunrise Street.
Sunrise Street. Okay. Thank you. Hi.
Michael, have y'all had this conversation with the town manager?
No, I mean, I'm somewhat familiar with the situation. I know that, I think, Rob has had some conversations about it. I think that Public Works has had some conversations about it.
And that's another thing. Public Works doesn't do what they say they're going to do. They came down there, I can't even remember how long it's been, a few years, and worked down there for, I don't know, a week or two, maybe, and was clearing off a place through there and split the land, gave me 10 foot and gave her 10 foot. And anyways, they were going to cut those trees down. They have not cut those trees down. And I had, one of them broke off, and I had to pay to get it cleaned up this year.
Ma'am, I'm trying to understand that all of that is on private property. Is that correct?
All of what?
Those trees, the...
Yeah, they gave me that little stretch. I ran because I knew they weren't going to do it anyway. And I don't know what they did with the project they had going. But he told me that those trees would be cut down, but they're not cut down. They're still there, and I ain't seen nobody doing nothing down there since they worked down there.
Well, I know, I know we can't do any work on private property.
Well, he said they was going to cut them down.
I don't know. I'm still new here. I don't know who he is.
Jeff, excuse me, Jeff Elba. I call him Governor Powell. Because that's who he reminds me of. Last town meeting, I come here, he was sitting beside me, drunk as a skunk and spitting air and beer in a cup. And that's why I said, no need to go to a town meeting. That's a joke.
Our next public comment, citizen's comment, is Derek High. Thank you. Just state your address, if you don't mind, sir.
Yeah. As you said, my name's Derek High. I live at 582 Oakley Avenue. I'm a physical therapist in the area. My wife is a retired nurse. She recently got ALS, and we're kind of dealing with that. And her idea, she came up with the idea of selling the land back behind us. And we've already got a fellow looking into the situation. And then she approached me about, you know, what had happened at the end of Sunrise, which is directly behind my house. They put the three houses in right next to me about two, three years ago. Cleared it out about five years ago. Well, my, the woods that they're going to take down are kind of along the same line of woods. And this is probably going to start in the next, I'd say, three to six months. We don't have an actual buyer. We have somebody who's looking into it. And I can see if it caused the problems that it caused last time, that there's the potential for even worse problems this time. There is nothing at the end of Sunrise that would look like any sort of formal drainage situation. So I can see where she would be kind of upset about it. But, you know, she asked me to come, and this situation hadn't started yet. So that's why I'm approaching you guys about the potential for a problem down at the end of Sunrise if they do start to take those woods down. So, thank you. Nice seeing all of you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
If you would, as far as how do you want to handle going forward? Do you want to just, y'all have some conversations and then...
Well, we can, but ultimately, what the issue is, is anything that's private property, obviously, we can't work on. We can't use any taxpayer dollars to work on private property. Inside of the right-of-way and stormwater conveyance is all VDOT. That's the Virginia Department of Transportation.
Okay.
The town of Appomattox owns 50 feet, because I know they do, and I'm telling you that, the street and down to my driveway, they own 50 feet.
It's a sewer easement, I think, is what she's talking about.
I don't know why you can't put in drainage.
Is that correct?
Because the neighbors yard, the law must just town anyway. She don't even have a driveway. It's town property.
It shouldn't have driveway.
Huh?
Yeah, you're right. Shouldn't have driveway.
Have you want to investigate whatever to get up to speed on what's going on and address it, let us something to them?
Sure.
If y'all like, whatever.
And I noticed across Oakley, where they're building all their houses and going up a hill there, building houses, oh, they put in all kinds of drainage down. So who did that?
The owner.
Yeah. I'm pretty sure the owner. The builder would have had to pay to install that.
Well, I asked him. Stennett is the one building some of them anyway. And he was building those three new houses on Oakley. And I stopped up there one day, and I said, I hope you're putting in drainage. I ain't going to say the word he said, though. I just got back from my car and left. He was a very nasty person.
All right. Thank you all for addressing that. We'll try to come up with some kind of comment to you. Conversation with the town manager. At this time, I'm going to turn the meeting back over to the mayor.
Thank you, folks. Sorry for the tardiness. Some critical situations were our work. Where are we at in the agenda?
Mayor's comment?
As everybody knows, everybody's busy these days that's willing to work. We appreciate them coming out. We appreciate your comments. We will do our best as the town to address them where we are allowed. And we'll take all your comments into consideration in addressing these situations. We do appreciate it. Thank you.
Who are you, the new town manager?
No, ma'am. Mr. Campbell over here is the new town manager. I'm the mayor. Been the mayor for five years now. This time, we'll adopt the consent agenda. All matters listed under consent agenda are considered routine by the council and will be approved or received by one motion in the form listed. Items may be removed from the consent agenda for discussion under the regular agenda upon motion of any council member and duly seconded. Items on our consent agenda at this time on the June 9th, 2025, regular council meeting and the June 24th, 2025 workshop meeting. Entertained a motion to accept?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion made and properly seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, no? Ayes have the motion carries.
I'll probably step.
That's all right. We've already covered your citizen comment. Unless there are any other citizens, any comments to us today? Thank you.
Can we go back to the scheduled appearance?
All right. Okay. Each member has an approval, has an agenda. Entertained a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting?
We already did that.
We did that.
I'm sorry. Pardon me. Thank you. That's what happens when you're tardy. Our scheduled public appearances. Mike?
Mr. Campbell? Yeah, we, yes, sir. We need to, our first presentation, our first piece of new business at the bottom of the page, number two, will be a presentation by Kathy Wright of Dentry Lock. Please welcome Kathy. She's been working with me very, working very hard on our water and sewer situation. So she's going to, and you have a council action form that gives you just a very brief description. She's going to give you a presentation regarding our master utility plan.
Okay. Mayor and council members, hello. My name is Kathy Wright. I work at Dentry Lock in the Roanoke office. And as Mr. Campbell said, I've been working with him and with other people in the town, town staff, on looking at the public utility situation, which I'm sure you're all are familiar with, but we thought it would be good to put it all together in sort of a short explanation of why we're, why we're looking at that and what we think the issues are. So, public utilities. You all have a, a public utility system, the water and the sewer. The goal that we're trying to reach, that I'm working on with Mr. Campbell, is to get them in a financially and operationally stable system so that they are self-sustaining financially. Why? Why do that? It's, it's a little bit unusual for a, a public utility to be operating at a deficit on a regular basis. And it happened here, and I don't think it's all that unusual for smaller public utilities out there, because, one, you have a limited number of people who are using the system. You can only spread the cost so far. So, you know, if you only have 10 people hooked up to your water or your wastewater system, those 10 people would be paying an outrageous amount to try and cover the operating cost. We don't, in the, in the past, when the, when the system was started up, it's a relatively small system. And so, as it has grown, it has been the norm, I think, for additional funds or basically savings funds to be used to help the operating budget. And it's, at some point, every utility system, if it's growing, has, comes to a point where it's going to have to make that flip and become self-sustaining. So, it's sound financial planning. It also is a protection for the general fund, because you don't want to have to go into your general fund to have to pull operating expenses for the, for the water and sewer. Also, the water and sewer systems, obviously, are crucial to any kind of growth, residential growth, commercial growth, industrial growth. And so, you need to have a good, strong utility system to support development and growth in the area. Okay. So if anybody's familiar with or not familiar with the current water and sewer system, the, everything is operated by the town. It is owned mainly by the town, but there is a part of it that is owned by Appomattox County. So the town has the water and sewer infrastructure, everything inside the town, including the wastewater treatment facility. It maintains the outflow permits. It has wells that currently are being maintained as emergency sources and for, I think, some backflow or something. Is that, anyway, they're there for emergency services and potentially could be used to supplement water coming in from Campbell County. But they're not set up, they're not immediately set up to do that right now. The county owns the water supply lines. The water, of course, comes from Campbell County Utility Services. And it's coming from out of the county. It comes into the county where Campbell County meets it, and then it comes into the town in a line that is currently owned by the county. They have an elevated storage tank, and they also have a pump station. Okay. So the county-owned water facilities, back in 2019, the county and the town signed a contract under which the town would maintain all of the water utilities and wastewater utility systems. And at the, at the end of the contract term, and also depending upon what happened with the water supply from, from Campbell County, all of that, all of the county infrastructure, that is, the tank and the, the line, the main line that comes in that supplies the water, we're going to transfer to the town. So under the contract, those, all of the county infrastructure on the water system is due to transfer to the town at the end of 2030. I've got it on there, it's January 1st of 2031. So at that point, that happens. Now, I also have on there, it may transfer sooner. So the county has indicated some interest in possibly just going ahead and moving that, switching that ownership to the town before 2031. And so that's, that's something that we're, that you all can consider, and there's no reason not to do that at this point, since every, since the town is maintaining and running everything anyway. Okay. So what are our challenges as far as getting these systems to a self-sustaining level? Okay. Again, as I explained, it's a relatively small system, so we can see how this situation developed, where it's just normally subsidized by water coming, by, I'm sorry, funds from, usually the enterprise funds, which the purpose of them, it should be to deal with, you know, repairs and other things that need to happen. You don't want to use your savings account, basically, to be running your operations day to day. So, these, this is a relatively small 20, these are the numbers. We currently have 1,200 people, almost 1,300 people on water, 1,000 people on sewer. Well, that was last year. I'm sorry. For fiscal, well, fiscal year '25 just ended, so that's 1,300 people on water and 1,000 people on the sewer. Again, the water and sewer enterprise funds have been used on a fairly regular basis to supplement the operating costs for those systems. And it, it would be a good idea to get away from that and stop doing that so that your enterprise funds are there when you need them for special projects or growth and that kind of thing.
Kathy, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but may interject, since you're on that slide, I was able later, late today to get our cash balance for our water and sewer funds.
Can we, oh, yeah, okay.
And so, our cash balance, really, we're just addressing water right now, is $991,000. To put that in perspective, roughly 600,000 of that will be spent in the next fiscal year. So that will leave us about a third, a fourth to a third of our operational expenses in our enterprise fund.
Right. Yeah. So that's what's generating the concern, is looking down the road. If we keep taking the money out of the enterprise funds, that's not going to be good. Our enterprise fund is going to run very low, if not out. So historically, the well system was used in the town. I think they had eight wells. And those were used up until 2012 as the main water source. So the wells were drawing water, and the town was using it, and the, and the water system was using water from wells directly, you know, within the town. That all changed in 2012 when Campbell County signed a contract with Appomattox County to provide water. That, that contract ends December 31st of 2030. So at that point, you can see under the water contract here, that contract allows, the contract language allows up to 750,000 gallons per day, but actually, it can't, it doesn't function at that level, because there are some improvements that need to be made in order to actually be able to supply 750,000 gallons. Currently, you all are using about an average of 224,000 gallons a day. There was a peak usage for 2024? Yeah, was 465 gallons a day. So you can see, it varies quite a bit. It depends on the season. It depends on whether people are watering their lawns or filling their swimming pools or doing other kinds of things. Back up just a second. Okay. So the wastewater treatment plant, the issue with the wastewater treatment plant that we see coming is that it's currently permitted for 300,000 gallons per day. And the current used profile is an average of 226 gallons a day, but it has peaked at 338,000 gallons a day. And so what that tells us is that it's running, it's starting to run close to its limit, as far as its permitted limit. And so it needs to be expanded. Okay. So, obviously, you all are familiar with the capital improvement program for the town. There are things, there are items already on it. So we have an idea. We're aware of those costs that are coming down the road. These are things that we know that the town needs to plan for. The existing capital improvements, we need to increase the wastewater treatment capacity, as we were just speaking about on the last slide. We need to decrease the inflow and infiltration. And I think you all had a presentation from CHA just last month, where they did a study and came back with some recommendations and projected costs for dealing with some of those INI issues. Obviously, if you all deal with the INI issues and you have less inflow and infiltration coming into the system, that will help a little bit with the sewer treatment plant capacity. Because if you don't have all that water coming in from rain and other sources, you're going to be limiting your water treatment plant usage to just the water that actually needs to be treated, just because it's going through the system. Confederate Avenue repairs, I think those are sort of in progress. So we have a projected cost on that, and we know what that's expected to be. And then we, returning the wells to regular use. Again, this is, to have them available, they're, yes, they're currently maintained on an emergency basis, but if, if we, if the contract with, heaven forbid, if the contract with Campbell County, USA, for some reason, is not continued after December 31st of 2030, it's possible that the wells, you're going to have to go back possibly temporarily or as a, as a subsidy water source. So you want to get those up and running before we get to that crisis point, because you may be needing that water from the wells. Okay. So the existing CIP is about one and a half million dollars for water and three quarters of a million for the sewer system. That's what's already on the books for that. The INI repairs, as you all heard about last meeting, are estimated at about $2 million of cost. The wastewater treatment facility, this is a very rough number, expected to be somewhere between $5 and $7 million to double the capacity, the current capacity from 300 to 600. The Confederate Avenue, again, already sort of in process in the works, that's expected to be 2.1 million. And building groundwater capacity, this is, this is addressing the expected cost of getting the wells back up and running in case they have to become the primary water source. So how do we suggest this be approached? And this is very, just sort of a big picture, very big picture. So, town utilities master plan. Did some, I'm sorry, I thought somebody had a question. Okay. So what we, what we recommend is that the town invest in a town utilities master plan. Now, there are companies and experts out there who do these plans. We need somebody to come in and do engineering studies, look at exactly what the system, these needs are now, and evaluate what needs to be done, update the CIP. And those, those companies or similar companies, they're, they have different levels of, different areas of expertise, but can do a financial analysis. And that's really important here, because with the systems running a little bit at a deficit, well, a lot at a deficit, you're going to need a strong financial plan that you can, so you can map out an overall plan to deal with all of these upcoming expenses. And something that's going to, you need to, there's going to be another rate study, and there was one several years ago, but that needs to be updated to see, you know, what kind of rates are going to be needed to cover some of this expense and the operating costs. And also, the part of the town utilities master plan would be a financial management So we, this is kind of a general timeframe that we're thinking this would cap, this would happen in if the town wanted to do this. So as far as transferring the county water facilities to the town, we have prepared a deed and bill of sale, and that's already gone over to the county. The county attorney is reviewing that. And so, but it's all, it's subject all to y'all's decision or agreement to just go ahead and take the equipment early rather than waiting until the end of the contract. But anyway, that is in the works. The county will need to have a review and public hearing, I believe, in order to transfer that, those facilities to the town. And then, we're thinking, hopefully by September, we can get all of that squared away, get the, get all of the infrastructure that the county owns transferred to town ownership, which will help then with moving forward with financial planning and that kind of thing. We also want to meet with CCUSA to talk about water sourcing after 2030. We need to find out sort of where their thinking is and get some information from them about what the possibilities are for a contract to keep water coming from CCUSA, because they have a lot of it. And that's a nice way to go if, if we can continue that relationship. Consider possible well sites. I think this is already under consideration, and they, some possible sites may have been identified, so I think they were working, that's already sort of in progress. We need to, you know, if, if the town moves forward with that, prepare an RFP to get the master plan done. So that's going to be for utility financing, planning services, advertise, take bids, and the normal process for going through and getting a contract in place to have these services done and reports prepared for the town. At this, which is somewhat optimistic sort of schedule, that only leaves you from about 2026 to 2031. So I mean, coming up pretty quickly in order to try and implement, you know, recommendations from these studies, from the master's plan. So it's something that you don't want to delay on too much, because construction projects, as I know you all are familiar with, just always take longer than you think they're going to take. So this is something that is fairly urgent for the town to address. And we recommend that, that the towns plan to take about $3,000 each from the water, the water enterprise fund and the sewer enterprise fund, so that we have a pool of about $200,000. about $200,000 in order to get that planning going and get the planning done. So that's the, that's the 10,000 foot or 30,000 foot view, whichever you prefer distance wise. Does anybody have any questions about that?
You're welcome to ask either one of us anything.
Yes.
The goal here is to position to the county that we should split the cost of this? Or what are your thoughts?
Well, the, the initial goal has got to be for us to understand exactly what it costs to operate our system. And once we understand what it costs to operate our system, then we have the information that we need to decide how we're going to go about doing that. You know, we could find that rates could be untenable, that it needs to be backfilled with something else. We could, we, we certainly would be looking for assistance from the county in some shape or form. Right now, the allocation of the $200,000 is a set aside essentially, kind of creating a, just a new line, line item. The expenditure wouldn't come until we actually had a successful RFP. All of this, all of this is going to be required and needed whether we're talking with CCUSA or whether we're talking with Appomattox County in our dealings with them or anyone else, even at the state level. We need, we will need all of this information and we will need to have gone through this process. The, the, you know, I can, I have done and can do analysis, but Mike says is not appropriate for, for something of this scale.
We need to have this study done.
Yes. And I want to be clear that I know that there was a study done that wasn't that long ago. You don't, any of you can look at the study and see that the study had to have been based off of what other localities in the region and in the state were charging. That has got absolutely nothing to do with us. What we need is a study that reflects our costs. And as you all know from having gone through the budget process, we all did this together, there is no fat in our budget. So it's, it's not a spending problem. So that's kind of my.
Sure. I guess in your research of this whole kind of conundrum, is there any sort of case law or any other example of one locality or municipal service authority threatening or actually being able to terminate water supply to another locality in, in the way that CCUSA is threatening the water supply here?
I can't say as I stand here that I'm, I've seen a case that's related to that. I have seen water utilities get into some very ugly and very expensive litigation battles over, yeah, over who owes what and who owns what and who's supposed to pay for what. And I think it, well, there was, there was litigation related to Campbell County.
Well, that's, yeah, I think I actually think that that is, Lynchburg, they've been abandoned, Campbell has. So the, the issue that we face that makes this probably different, and Kathy, please tell me if I'm wrong, was it 2022 when CCUSA sent the notice that they were terminating the lease?
2020.
Was it the 2020 termination?
Yes.
A decades notice.
Yeah. Yeah.
They do not have any responsibility to provide us with water, especially when we have wells. In other words, I mean, we could certainly have that argument, but I know that, I know that some folks have posited that, you know, there's maybe certain state agencies wouldn't allow them to, I don't, you can't, absolutely couldn't rely on that. I mean, and, and you think about the optics for the county and the town where you've had a decades notice to get your ducks in a row and then one day the water stops. And Kathy, have you seen another situation where so much notice has been given?
Would you be able to go back to that, just like the master plan slide? I just want to, I just want to visualize more of it. The one where it has all the dates.
Could we possibly get a hard copy of?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And this is, this is, it's pretty realistic. The, the, you know, obviously we're not going to come to you with, with a project timeline that we think is impossible. It's, it's going to be tight. If we authorize the RFP, if you decide to authorize the RFP, you know, that window of how long it takes the firm, I don't think it will take them very long because we've compiled so much information already. So that there's a question in that, is 90 days, 120 days, is what do they need there? When it comes to getting past the, getting past the report and taking action, where I'm at is we're, we're doing that this winter in budget, we're, we're planning our budget. And in 20, FY '27, we're making changes.
The, the MOU that we have with the County Economic Development Authority, which reserves both water and sewer capacity, is it your opinion that that is a binding MOU that they could call on that capacity? Or I guess where, where does that stand?
Generally speaking, no. I do not think they would be able to call on that. When the MOU was signed, there was no water coming from CCUSA. It was an entirely different system. The town was using its own well water as a supply source. So the, the entire system, the entire use of the water and the way that the system is developed test is not in place anymore.
And I would add to that, I would add to that, that the, I have never, I have never in my career seen a one-time expenditure buy you a lifetime license on usage for the wastewater treatment plant.
Right.
I have also, I seem to recall that the, that even if it did work that way, that those capacities do not transfer with sale. And I am under the impression that property is sold.
Well, in addition to that, there, there were later contracts involved in the CCUSA and later contracts involved between the county and the town that specifically say any prior agreements are superseded by these. So there are a number of fronts on which they would have to, they would have to overcome some hurdles in order to try and enforce that.
So I got a question. Don't throw anything at me. But so if, let's just say something happens in, what was it, 2030, that Campbell County says, you know, don't want to replenish or whatever the contract. And so that's going to, that's going to make us have to use our wells. Okay? Is there a different source that we can go to other than Campbell County where we could get water from? I mean, I'm just asking, I don't know.
Right. Well, and again, that's part of why we need to kind of do this comprehensive look and have people come in and say, well, these, these are your options. But we'll know well before 2030 if Campbell County is going to refuse to do that. I mean, we need to start talking to them now.
Well, and, and I have not begun any kind of official talks with Campbell, I don't want to misrepresent the situation. I have not, and nobody's promised me anything. But I am, as far as I know, the county administrator for Campbell County is back in town from out of town last week. And I'll be making a call this week to set up a meeting with him, to hopefully set up a meeting with CCUSA or whoever he wants me to meet with. If it's the CCUSA, the board of supervisors, or both.
I was saying if we had a backup plan as opposed to going to.
The only other option that there is besides Campbell County, the CCUSA and the wells is really probably not a tenable option would be to go, you can get the water directly from Lynchburg. But that would mean a whole transmission line because why would Campbell County agree for us to use their water line to purchase the water? You follow what I'm saying?
I got you, yeah.
So that would be a transmission line, I would believe, from, I mean, literally from Lynchburg to here.
And Mount Easus.
So basically this plan is really kind of like our landing instructions is the best way to put it. Because I, I feel as though we've been kind of operating in this four-engine plane with like one engine on fire. And so now we're basically getting a plan to, to essentially guide us down.
Yes.
And do y'all have, I guess amongst all the stakeholders here, do y'all have faith in this plan that this will get us into a landing space where we feel as though there are.
Well, this will, this will give us information. I mean, I have, we, we have the tools at our disposal to remedy these situations one way or another. How that all plays out, I, I couldn't possibly predict the future. But I will tell you that I would look at this as an integral part of our planning. I think the timing is actually wonderful in that, you know, I haven't come back to you yet with a strategic plan. It's not because I forgot about our retreat, it's because things have changed. We're also working on our comp plan at the same time, right? So what we're looking at over the course of the next six months is a manual on running the town for the next forever. You know, it's really between the comp plan, the strategic plan, and a mass utility plan, what else is there?
Yeah, these are, I mean, these are the types of plans that are going to be, they're in place for 30, 40 year. I mean, it's, it's going to, yes.
Do you have a, do you have a, I know you have to follow procedure, but do you have a company, an engineering company who specializes in water sewer?
I know multiple that would be highly qualified to do this. It would come down to, to normal, you know, procurement type things. But I have no concerns about our ability to hire the proper people to do this.
Right. Okay.
I think from a political standpoint, we, we might all know the answer to this, but from a legal and I guess administrative or operational standpoint, what would be the best possible outcome that we should be positioning for with a county-town relationship? In terms of this negotiation or future, you know, as we, let's say we take ownership of the water line, we're still providing water sewer to the Economic Development Authority, to county customers. I guess, how should that relationship develop from a agreement and, and actual, I guess, administrative and documents, you know, perspective?
Agreements, I think, are a little bit probably preferred to say setting up an authority. You could theoretically set up a, an authority, but those are very, they're more problematic. Yeah, I think, because you only, if, if it's just the town and the county, the town and the surrounding county, you're probably better off just having an agreement in place as to how to deal with that than setting up a whole separate authority.
I would, I would strongly agree with that from the simple perspective of we, I must say this, we are, we understand utilities. We are the utility provider. They don't. It's, it's not, it's, you know, it's not something that should be like a political football type thing. And that's, I think that's what, essentially what you're ending up with in a, you know, if we had a multi-jurisdiction, like if we threw a whole another player in the game, then that would be a different, a different topic, I guess.
There would be no reason in my mind to set up a separate entity as in a separate utility authority that we have, the town is already in essence.
We are.
The authority and we have been. And we would lose any control, we would.
Right.
Because the, that's how it works. And I don't see with just, we're in, we're in the county, we're, we're not providing water to.
Well, in, in the best, the, the most positive way to look at this, and this is the most realistic way to look at this, we here at the town, we're, we're the experts. We understand what we're doing here. We know how to run this utility. And this is the main function of the town is to serve its residents with these utilities and provide civilization to this area and to the businesses. No one else is going to do it better. No one else is going to be able to, to focus on their constituents the way that they should and focus on this area. I think that's been borne out over history. The town, you know, there's, the town exists because it absolutely needs to exist in order to watch out for essentially the services that the entire county relies on day in and day out, from schools to public safety, to hitting up the restaurant, going to Kroger or Walmart. That's possible because of the town. So.
And that's not an unusual relationship.
Fire suppressing. I mean, that's so important.
It's very important. And that's a normal life cycle, sort of development relationship between a town and the surrounding county. As part of working with Michael, I have gone back and looked at the comprehensive plans and for both the county and the town. And it's, I've seen it written more clearly, but it's clear that there's an anticipation that the town is going to grow and that the county is going to assist it in growing. The town, you know, the county, at least according to its comprehensive plan, has indicated that it's, it's not in the mindset of trying to block the town in.
Kind of what a study would provide us, which I'm not against the study, but we already know what it's costing us and plus what our deficit is. So I mean, we got an idea. But I don't think the town can stand a whole lot of shock and awe with utility rates going through the roof and even thinking about economic development. So where do you find that thin line of, we've been doing little subsidies here and there to get us by. It's called getting it by. I don't think it's burning, but you know, we can't go too far the other way and cost the taxpayers a whole lot of money and run people away from town. All that restaurants could close if you jack your water rate up. So we got to find that balance, as I talked about before. Economic development and the people coming to this town is very pertinent on how much our water and sewer rates are. And that's what we've always looked at, even though we, and we knew it's going to put us in the red a little bit. We've always been able to, but I know we're venturing into new expansions and here and there, but we got to be careful of setting rates to where you run everybody away. In three years, you won't have no restaurants, we're going to have restaurants.
The answer there, though, is a political one. I mean, it's, we're getting to the point where we're up against a rock and a hard place and we have infrastructure that is very old and failing. And we have a question about where we're going to get water from and it may lead to tax increases. And that's just, I'd rather have tax increases and rate increases than not having water. And I think that's the message that we need to relay to our partners at the county because ultimately this is, you know, town residents or county residents too. And we've partnered on water and sewer since 1940. And that, that history, I think, is important because 1,800 people can't support this water system by themselves.
Yeah, there's a, I certainly don't want to, you know, there, there's a time and a place for us to get into talking about our budgets and fees and the taxes. But, and, and, you know, having this study, that's, that's part of the, that's part, I mean, that's a huge, that's basically what this thing is about, is, is understanding the costs, how to pay for it. And then understanding the costs will give you options. But I, I have to, I have to tell you all, I mean, it would be remiss in not telling you all right now. We absolutely will be raising taxes or the town will fall.
Mr. Mayor, ma'am, may I move a motion?
You may.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the master utility plan and to allocate $200,000 from the water and sewer funds for the professional services required.
I second.
I second that.
Motion made and properly seconded to fund the water plan for some, up to $200,000 from the water and sewer funds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in. By a roll call vote. Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Cardwell?
Yes.
Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
Ms. Spiegel?
Yes.
Mr. Smith? Sorry. Pardon. Mr. Simpson?
Yes.
Swear I like my cheat sheets, sorry. Mr. Hensley?
Yes.
By a vote of six to nothing, motion carries.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
We do appreciate this insight and forethought, and we hope that we can properly execute this moving forward to get us to a sustainable utility service provider for our community.
I think this will be the beginning of a long and beautiful friendship.
And it was good to meet you in person.
Yes.
Very nice to meet you.
This evening, I'm sure we'll be seeing you here again as we move forward. And we will move forward. We are going to get this done. No one, think about it, rethink it and get negative, we will get this done. We are going to move forward with this. It has to happen.
All right, our next item on the agenda, consideration to approve the board of directors as presented for the Rose Project. It's in your packet.
I move that we approve the board of directors as presented.
I'll second.
Motion made and properly seconded to approve the board of directors for the Rose Project as presented.
Do I need to recuse myself from the vote?
No, ma'am. I do not believe so. To state, the proposed board includes Ms. Spiegel from Town Council, Mr. Hensley from the Town Council, Mr. Carter from Town Staff, Ms. Rock Gibb from Town Staff.
She's acting, Tori's acting as a town citizen.
Ms. Marcy Stanley at large, and Ms. Margaret White as the Director slash Registered Agent. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? The ayes have it, the motion carries, thank you. Next consideration, adopt a resolution for participation in the Virginia County slash Virginia Municipal League Virginia Investment Pool.
So this item is something that I've been speaking to you about since I came on board. You know, currently, we keep most of our cash, well, all of our cash funds in either CDs, money market, or checking account. And we have a large balance in the checking account in our general fund. That's, you know, I think maybe the actual cash balance is somewhere, I don't know, two million, three million dollars, collecting something like $35 a month in interest. So, the idea is to start utilizing the pool, like most other localities. The most recent look I took at it, it was paying something like four and a half percent, it was outpacing CDs. We can withdraw the money if we need it tomorrow, I can get the money out tomorrow, or you can get the money out tomorrow. But they require this resolution that's in your packet, somewhere, here we go. Was it trust joint agreement? So I think we're asking for a resolution.
Who is the signer on this? Is it Kim by title, or you?
No, it should be me. But with the way we're set up, I say it should be me, it could absolutely be Kim, it makes, it's, it's an or-designee. And Frank, if I'm saying anything crazy, please correct me. But it's an or-designee type thing, so it can, it's fine if Kim signs it, so long as she is, she can be considered a designated, and she absolutely is, as the Treasurer and Finance Officer.
Hey, so which, which is the answer to this question, but you probably know them. How liquid is the cash for this investment pool?
I can...
What's our impact on our withdrawal, what's our impact on our withdrawal of funds from the current savings instruments, investment instruments?
Well, we're not gonna pull anything out of the penalty.
Okay.
So what we have is cash right now, we would put in as soon as we possibly could. And as the CDs mature, we would also put those in as soon as we possibly could. The last time I re-up CDs, I only re-upped them for six months. Two things happened when I did that. We actually got a higher interest rate because I did that, because of the uncertainty with interest rates. But I also did that with this in mind. So, as far as the liquidity in the pool, like I was saying, it's like a checking account. If you decide right now that we need to withdraw a million dollars tomorrow, we can do that. The board of this thing is made up of other chief administrative officers of large and small localities. This is a very good organization, very trustworthy, been around a while. And having access to them as a resource, even if we end up, you know, for debt service, we need to borrow money. They do that, too.
So what are we limited to?
At what kind of rate?
For as a town, what are we limited to in far as the investment pool? Because I know some of it's up there paying seven, eight percent.
Well, we have, so there's, again, we, I mean, I wouldn't, I mean, I wouldn't want to do it as a town manager, but I mean, I mean, you know, there's financial advisors and things out there, there's mechanisms that you can use, but really, we want to be at a T-bill level of risk with our money. And that's basically what this is.
Aren't we also kind of pressed with that when it comes to just the Virginia Code?
Yeah, they, I mean, we can't, we can't, I can't, I'm not, well, I'm not supposed to go down to Rosie's with our money and try to double it. Yeah, so we are definitely limited, and, I mean, like, we can't just take the taxpayer money and put it in a mutual fund of our choice.
I did a chart when, I think you mentioned this a couple of months ago, which this is, I just want to put this for the record in the minutes, that this was a you idea, this is awesome, we obviously hadn't thought to do it, this is a Michael Campbell win, thank you. The return over the past five-year period is, it's like three or four percent. If you had put that money into a money market fund, which we're not allowed to by law, we can't go out and buy securities, you know, the return would have been forty-five percent or something absurd, like if you just bought the S and P 500. But this is the best available thing that we can do with our money as a locality in Virginia. So, otherwise, we're just, our money is literally shrinking every day, it's in a checking account.
Yeah, this also opens up a place for diversification. The second question I wanted to ask was, at what rate does the interest accrue? So is it like paid out monthly, or is it paid out quarterly? How does that operate? Because I know that we're gonna be draining the operating fund, and then it's gonna go back up, so I'm just wondering.
Well, they list as APR, but I mean, it fluctuates with the prime. So, it's, I mean, as far as accrual goes, I mean, I'm sure they probably pay monthly.
Yeah, okay, that's what I was thinking.
That's what I understand.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So basically, we pull the money out of the bank, local banks, and putting it into the, this?
Yes.
It's like if you had an IRA or a 401K, it's just a...
And I did think, trust me, I thought about that, and, but the thing is, is we have a, we have a, I'm not, you know this, Timmy, you're the epitome of this, of having a responsibility to the residents well over any particular business or entity in the town. So, we've got to do what's right by that.
I just bring it up so everybody else will know.
Yeah, no, I got you. Yeah, let's be clear that we will be cleaning out our banking account.
On record, that we're not...
Putting it all in black?
No, because the last person that did that is still in prison.
Oh, it's happened?
Oh, yeah, it's happened a few times.
Oh, I gotta look that up.
So, when we should make these plans and all this stuff, what does our financial management policy say about it? So that when we're, when we are, so, when you're looking at this from a diversification perspective, like, where is it really being placed at and everything? Because I know that there's a certain entity for checks, there's a certain entity for...
I mean, there's really no diversification in that, in that, again, it's, we're at a level that I feel like, I mean, it's like par. We're at basically a level of like buying T-bills. So, it's, 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 look, if VACO goes, if we lose money, if VACO goes up in flames, there's other issues that we will be dealing with besides worrying about our checking account.
The actual investment and the breakdown of it is available on their website. It's a large amount of federal treasuries. So, if the US dollar goes to nothing, then we have problems, but...
And we would, we would suffer those same consequences in the investment methods we're using now.
Yes.
It beats that.
Actually, we were much less likely to suffer a bank run at VACO than we would be at local...
Because it's limited to who can participate and who can acquire funds for whatever project from them.
I move that we approve, we haven't gotten the motion on it yet.
I'll second it.
Motion made, properly seconded, to approve the adoption of this resolution. Any further discussion?
Just one question. So then, going forward, it would be basically the Bank of VML VACO and not Farmers Bank and Athletics, as far as our traditional banking goes.
Correct. Well, no, we would still maintain, we would still have a checking account. We'd still have checking accounts. So, we would not eliminate all business we do outside of, outside of the pool. It's just that we would, we would keep an operating minimum in the bank, not everything that we have.
Got you.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's actually easier on the banks, because the reserve requirements for small banks, when they deal with local governments, are actually pretty oppressive, because they have to keep, like, they like doing ten to one reserve overnight. And if they're dealing with local governments, they almost have to keep a one-to-one balance. So, with smaller banks, three or four million dollars, that's a lot of money they have tied up. So it's not actually helping the Farmers Bank to keep that money.
I just realized something, do any recuse myself? I should work at the bank.
You work at first, at the Farmers Bank?
Yeah.
I would recommend that you...
Okay, never mind, I'm going to take back my second.
All right.
Can I get a, thank you, thank you, Ms. Spiegel, thank you, Mr. Cardwell.
I thought you were at Bank of the James.
All right.
Yeah, no, right, gosh.
There goes your favorite.
I'm calling the court of counsel.
You can't shut it up, I've tried.
You can, but you're gonna take all your notifications off. Any other questions? We're gonna, I'm just trying to get it proper.
Give him a minute.
By a roll call vote, Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Hensley?
Yes.
Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
Mr. Cardwell has recused himself. Mr. Simpson?
Yes.
Ms. Spiegel?
Yes.
By a vote of five to nothing, motion carries.
The next item for the Lindham Cooperative MOU, that was, it's the AI in the school that Nathan and Timmy have been working on. Nathan shot me a rough draft MOU, I put my little spit and polish on it, had it reviewed by David Treev?
David Treev.
David Treev, he was good with it. So, really, all we need is for you to authorize me as signatory to sign on our behalf, and then the school board and/or the superintendent, however they want to handle their half, they sign, and AI server goes over there and...
Cool. I move that we approve the MOU. Well, if y'all have any questions about it.
So, just, you feel like school will approve what we present to them?
I think so, it's...
Pretty cutting, right?
So, just for full disclosure, Timmy and I met with the IT Director, Philip Amos, and I also had a conversation with the outgoing superintendent, well, she was still superintendent, and kind of roughed out the idea, it's, you know, it's still wide open. We don't know how it's going to be, you know, it's in purpose. My personal goal with it is to, you know, get students using it and get some sort of program developed around it so that we can go out and apply for state and federal grant money, so that could help develop a program. Of course, all that's competitive, and we don't know if we'll get any, but worst case, we have a $60,000 computer that's now available for high school students and potentially the broader community to use. So I think that's a big win, it's a win in my book. And this MOU is, it's kind of as, it is the bare bones minimum of an agreement that would be required for us to share this piece of equipment. And I just kind of left it wide open so the program can develop.
And I think the goal of the school is, on their side, is to make use of this to help educate the kids in a different field that we haven't had before. So, I think this could be great.
Me too.
So if GPAs go from 3.0 to 4.25?
Something like that.
Maybe if the GP, if the server access is the grade book.
I've got a video on this.
Can we get a second on that motion?
Second, okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? There's no further discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, no? The ayes have it, the motion carries. Back to item five, I think we got skipped.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I apologize.
That's all right, consideration of stated documents in reference to the county water facilities.
This is, this is simply, I think what's been provided to you is the deed that Kathy Wright, Ms. Wright, wrote for us that we sent over to the county. What I'm asking for is from you all, this is informative, the county has indicated that they're gonna make some changes. Whatever we come, whatever we end up with, we'll make sure that it's been reviewed, and it's, it says what it needs to say. Essentially, what I'm asking for from you all today is permission to accept the water system from the county as soon as possible.
Can I make a motion to do that?
And they asked us for a second, third, fourth, that.
Motion made, properly seconded.
One question, I guess, procedure, can you, so let's say the county does agree without substantial change to the agreement that you presented them, from this vote, are you able to bind and complete the actual purchase? Or would that have to come back, or the transfer, or would that have to come back before the council again for another...
The, well, what I'm asking for basically is the, is for the authority to sign.
Yeah.
So that if they make changes, you're trusting my judgment.
Yeah.
That there, that I've gotten legal counsel, and that it's, it's, well, it would, it could, you know...
So that's the intent here, it's just, if the county agrees, then Michael from this vote will have full authority to execute the agreement.
Absolutely.
If anything, I promise you, you know me by now, if anything is substantive, I'll be back before you to get you to approve it, because I'm not gonna...
Because if they makes a lot of changes...
I'm not going out on that limb.
If their lawyer makes a lot of substantial changes.
Yeah, no.
Something like that, we don't know.
Well, we wouldn't agree, like, so, this is the thing, I don't, again, I don't want to spend a lot of time speculating. It feels like it's a stall, because the thing is, is that the deed is pretty much the exact same thing that they've already agreed... that the deed is pretty much the exact same thing that they've already agreed to, that we default to in 2030. So it's like, do it now, do it later, it's the same, same thing. And if you recall, the county approached the town and me about us hurrying it up and taking this. So this is just making sure that the council is good with us.
So if they kind of like double the price, it's an N, triple, then we go back to?
Well, yeah, and there's no, and there shouldn't be, there's no, it's one dollar.
Yeah.
They want three dollars, I think, I'll throw in the two.
So this requires us to water line, all the utility right of ways, all the building, property, the tanks, pump stations, generators, mineral rights, all that.
Our hours, we don't have to rent them or anything, they're ours.
Has a full title search been done yet, or would that be, and then whose cost would that title search be?
Oh, we're not, yeah, we're, no, we haven't, we're not there yet. This deed, though, this deed is encompassing, it's, everything that has anything to do with it is being transferred over to you, to us.
Would we buy title insurance for that? I just, I imagine it's going to be really complex.
If you can get title insurance.
Yeah, I mean, you're talking about tens of, well, more than that, what, county, tens, tens of miles of easements and, you know, stuff in the right of way, I'm sure at some point, water line's probably under 460, who knows?
I mean, the benefit that you have as a town, I mean, you've got the right of eminent domain.
Should something occur.
Should something arise.
Does that allow us eminent domain outside of the town limits? Does it allow us eminent domain outside of the town limits?
In certain circumstances, yes.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Would this be, so I'm getting way out of my wheelhouse, and I'm playing the what-if game, so forgive me, but is this like fee simple, where any eminent domain issue that would arise in the, you know, what was previously the county, and we would then have to pay for that battle, or legal process or whatever to obtain it? They wouldn't have any grandfathered responsibility to deliver us a clear title?
Well, they, I mean, the deed, let me give a little bit of the deed, what's the...
Yeah, certainly, Frank's opinion, the deed should cover us in a manner in which they are responsible for conveying.
They're agreeing to transfer grant, they would general warranty and English evidence of title.
Okay.
Which is essentially the highest level of warranty you can get.
So if there were a title dispute, we could sue them for, correct, okay, that's fine.
Pendant water agreements, too, this, like, I know several places had agreement to hook water to the water line in the county, but I don't think they have yet. Those agreements all still be in good faith, or is that, we could take them on as a town customer, I guess. When they put the water line in, they promised all these lines to people, that deadline might have passed.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, for, in accepting the water line outside of the town limits, and any path we take to move forward successfully, the more customers we can get, the better.
Because the trash, one I can think of right offhand is the trash transfer station out in the county, which never happened, but the board approved the land for that.
Right.
They wanted us to provide water for them.
Right, well, we don't, we don't, the only mechanism that I would perceive, any kind of town providing water connection without fee would be an economic development type.
Are there any long-term leases on the water tower for radio, or?
On the county one? Not that I'm aware of, no.
So there's no radio equipment at all?
There's no saver, not normally.
No power equipment for, okay, transit.
Skater system.
Is there any emergency, is any of the 911 radio on there?
No, it's not.
It's just a skater system, I think, right?
Right now, it's not a need for it. That's the only. Because it's already been covered. Communications infrastructure, all the tower is spout spray.
Or are you?
Okay. Needed in the future, we could do it.
I move that we accept the...
I think Mr., Mr. Garrett made the motion, Ms. Spiegel seconded it, and as you interrupted, I was about to ask if there was any further discussion.
My apologies.
That's all right.
I just want to add, to clarify in my motion, that doesn't give Michael the authority to sign on our behalf.
Thank you. This is no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, no? The ayes have the motion carries. Their final item of new business, consideration to participate in the Middle James Regional Water Supply Plan.
This is, this is great, Alec Brebner has set this up, said the DEQ has in the past asked localities and the regions to do water supply plans, they asked in the past, now they're telling. So Alec Brebner and the PDC, of which Richard, the mayor and I, remember, were able to get a grant. This will benefit us greatly, this will, this will lean into everything we've been discussing tonight, so this actually benefits us uniquely out of the region. Because of the nature of the expense, they didn't do per capita, I mean, it wouldn't be right for Appomattox to pay a dollar twenty-six for this, and, you know, so their ask from us is $4,000 for a study that'll end up costing probably a quarter of a million dollars that will serve the town.
Question, so for the $4,000 match, what fund will it be coming out of, and how, do we need to make another line item for?
No, I mean, for $4,000, we, I mean, we have some line items I could basically...
Yeah, and it's not exceeding 1% of the budget anyway.
Basically pick from, yeah, it's, really, the crux of being, this being before, at that limit, I didn't bring it to you because of the $4,000, I brought it to you because we're going into an agreement with the PDC. So, yeah, the money is not really an issue. It's just, if you have any questions about what we're doing here, what this is, please let me know, it's, but what we're paying for is a regional water supply plan, and that lends itself back to our very beginning discussions about water and reservoirs and pumps out of rivers and all that kind of stuff. So it'll show that, it'll show our water situation, good things could come from it, you know, USDA money for projects, maybe nothing comes of it, but it'll be helpful to have.
So, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve to participate in the Middle James River Regional Water
Can I get a second?
One second.
Motion made and properly seconded, that Town and Athletics participate in the Middle James Regional Water Supply Plan. Any further discussion?
Mayor, just for the record, I'll abstain from this one, VDM is a client of mine that exceeds the Coya allowed limit per year.
Add it to Mr. Simpson. Shall be doing this by roll call vote. Mr. Garrett.
Yes.
Mr. Boyce.
Yes.
Mr. Cardwell.
Yes.
Mr. Hensley. Ms. Simpson, Ms. Spiegel, sorry. I got doubly confused, thank you, Ms. Spiegel. I get a little crossed. By a vote of five to nothing, the motion carries. So any other new business coming with the council at this time? Do we have any council standing committee reports? Mr. Campbell, the town manager's report.
I will just add that we've received 184 applications for the town clerk position, 73 for the part-time HR generalist, Don Marr is pre-screening candidates, he hopes to have, have the pre-screening done by the end of the week, which is going to be quite a task for him, for the clerk position, not for both of them. The clerk is our priority for multitude of reasons, mainly, if nothing else, aside from these meetings, it's near impossible for office staff with Christie and Sharon to do anything without having a third person up there, and of course, the person is also, Cindy and whoever we hire is a huge help to me. As soon as, but we're not, we're not lagging on the HR generalists, as soon as we can get those pre-screened, Don will work on pre-screening HR, we'll do this all concurrently, and...
How many applications did you save after that?
147 for clerk, 73 for, 186, sorry.
Now, they, it was on, it's, we put it on Indeed and on government jobs, and it's also, I think, on the county, or, excuse me, the town website, the Indeed applicants, I mean, probably 80% of them you can reject in five seconds. But I don't know that, it's still good, it's a very good problem to have, it's a very good problem to have to have that number of applicants for a position. That's all I have.
Council comment, I'm going to start with Ms. Spiegel tonight.
I have nothing tonight.
Mr. Simpson.
Just two things, I always told myself I'd never be the county people or the elected people, or whatever the storyline is in Dirty Dancing, where they say you can't dance, but as a...
Footloose, sorry.
Footloose, sorry, yeah, same thing. As I get older and pay taxes and have a wife and kids. Yeah, so, so the town park that we just invested all that money into, I see folks riding up and down 727 all the time, I say all the time, but probably once or twice a week at least, they're on dirt bikes and minibikes, and apparently, they're going into the town park and riding dirt bikes and minibikes on our freshly paved asphalt trail. So I don't know if that's something we can spot on the camera and just give, I don't know, put up no dirt bikes on the path signs, if that's something people would listen to, but it is something that I was made aware of that was happening, so.
I will call Robbie, I will, at least, at the very least, call Robbie the next day or two, and then we are efforting towards getting the camera system completely squared away.
Awesome, awesome.
Yeah, and when I say efforting, I mean, we're getting close.
Awesome, yeah, I mean, I worry about kids that are walking on that, but also the people, because if they wreck their dirt bike on town and property, that's a problem for us, too. The other thing, I don't know what we can do about this, or if we should do anything, but the Road Festival Board has county representation, and we fund part of the Road Festival. I would love to see town representation on that, it won't be me, I don't want to be on the Road Festival Committee Board, but if somebody from council wanted to be on the Road Festival Committee Board, it'd be great to reach out to them and ask, they have two county employees on there, and I just think, as a funder of the Road Festival, I think we get $10,000 a year, it would be good to have a voice in planning, because everything takes place within the town limits, so it would be great for us to have representation, but that's all I have.
Could I, could I circle background?
That's me.
I want to thank Christie for stepping up once again in helping, don't say no, in helping in the interim period between clerks, you do an excellent job, and you need to be called out for it.
I appreciate that, I trust it'll be a very short period.
Well, and then, but, and also with training of the clerk, you're inter, really involved in that, you were so with Cindy, so.
Appreciate that.
Mr. Hensley. Do you have any council comment?
He said no.
No, I'm sorry. Mr. Garrett?
No, I'm good.
Mr. Cardwell?
No, thank you.
Mr. Boyce?
Actually, I do have one thing to say.
No.
And that is a thank you to this council for the unity that we showed tonight, if we stayed unified, we can get things done, and it's only going to be through unity that we're being here to do.
Yes.
So, thank you each and everyone.
That's only 756. Pretty good.
We'd been going, if Richard had his hands up.
I was moving to it.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett, I appreciate that. Thank you all for coming here tonight, pardon my tardiness, I have some critical things going on at work, it's been a long two weeks here. There's no other business coming for the council at this time.
I'm making a motion with adjournment.
Second.
Motion made, properly seconded for adjournment, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, no? You can adjourn, thank you.